Let me call the meeting to order. Cheryl should be back in a second. So, if you all have looked at the minutes, could I have a motion on acceptance?
No.
Okay. Any comments, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed? Maybe one. Okay. Thank you. All right. Yeah, before we go, before I get into administrative reports, we do have a new school committee member here. So, would you like to introduce yourself and give us a little background?
I'm so pressured.
Try to make it less right now. All right. My name is Fred Jean-François. I'm working in Flamingest Park Casino as an IT Infrastructure Administrator. I'm a doctor in IT. And I'm here in Ocam not too long ago. I moved to Ocam. I have two kids in the school. And I'm happy to be here and I'm willing to help. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to call me, contact me, do whatever you gotta do. I will be here.
Do you know what machines pay best down there? We'll talk later.
Well.
Welcome.
Yes, welcome. Hopefully, you know, you'll approve of us. I mean, from my perspective, the Jean-François part, I mean, it just raises our cultural level already. So, thanks for joining.
But that was hard, right?
Well, I'm not gonna go there. Okay. Administrative reports, superintendent?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman, that's not handled later on in the agenda.
All righty. Assistance superintendent?
I don't have anything this evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, if Mark doesn't talk too much, we may really roll through this.
Mark, who? Which Mark?
You guys decide.
That would be you.
Director of Administrative Services?
Since our last meeting, the Warrant Subcommittee has signed Payroll Warrant 15 and 16, and accounts Payable Warrant 15A, 15B, and 16A. And also, I just saw our presenter come in. Hi, Kate.
Hi.
Okay. I'll give you a minute to get ready.
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we've got here tonight Kate Canny, who's with PARZ, who is the organization that we've decided that we are going to open our OPEB trust fund with. Tonight, we will take the formal vote to establish the trust fund. The language has been with you for about a month. Kate is here to ask, give a little overview of the whole program, and then to be here to answer any questions you might have. Once we get the program voted in, it does, we do have to wait by law 90 days to make a deposit to it. That's why we want to get it kind of like taken care of tonight and move on. But Kate Canny, get the floor.
I'm sorry. Give it a little bit longer to get there then.
Always does.
Thank you for inviting me in. My name is Kate Canny. I work for a public agency, Retirement Services. Our name kind of sums up what we do. We work strictly with public agencies, and we help them fund and plan to fund their retirement services. That's what we do. We've been up and running since 1984. We began, started our first OPEB trust for our client in 1998, very forward-thinking school district in California. So, our first clients and early adopters were actually school districts. So, what we have designed and put together is what's called a multiple employer trust. And that is a program where we have established a master trust, and the documents have been established, vetted by both our federal attorneys and also our attorneys here in Massachusetts. Murphy has C2, Mink, and Copeland and Page. They're vetted and made sure that they're applicable to Mass General Law, Chapter 32B, Section 20. We also have what's called a private letter ruling from the IRS. We received that in 2004. That's so that we have a Section 115 IRS private ruling trust, which means all the assets going into the trust and the assets coming out of the trust, the earnings, are tax-free. There's no implication on you as an agency or the state fiduciary, which is why you've established this trust as holding parties. We've established the multiple employer trust. That's established and developed a term key approach. We have the trust, the legal aspect is set up, and then we have set up the custodian and trustee, who acts as a co-fiduciary of the funds. That's US Bank. So, you as an agency have the fiduciary responsibilities to maintain these assets for the retirees' benefits. And US Bank serves in that role as well. They're strictly a custodian, and they monitor the funds. The third part about it is we've established a portfolio with Vanguard. So, Vanguard Investments. And some of you may have heard of Vanguard. And so, what we did, we established these four pools that you can select one of, for a participant. It's a fixed income pool, a conservative, a balanced, and a growth. Those pools are developed based on a balance of fixed income to equity balance. So, as you notice, it's a little more higher in equity-based funds as goes up. And that's your choice to make, choose one of those pools. And that's based on, one, your risk tolerance as an agency, and, two, your goals. We have rate of return set for those, for 30-year rate of return. So, these portfolios have been established, and you get to participate in them. The reason this is a benefit for you as the portfolio is because it's a cost sharing. We have $1.6 billion of assets under management, so we're able to put that out to you as to participate in it. In order for you to participate in the pools that we've designed, you would need to come to the table with $250 million. We don't have any agencies that can do that, but we've established those portfolios. So, the investment earnings are based on that and the assets. So, it's really the program we've established. And then, we also assist with the administrative burden of maintaining our work trust. We do all the full legal and compliance monitoring. We develop the monthly and quarterly reports. And we also work with you to do any gathering of documents and information for your actuary and your auditors. So, we're sort of having, you know, Cheryl gets to offload that whole burden onto my team, and she gets to say, like, I don't have to do this. Like, she doesn't have to gather them, which is great, because she has enough that she's doing it. So, that's the overview of the program. And I know I just dropped a whole lot of information on you, and I'd like to see if anybody has any questions.
Can you just give us an example of some school districts in our area that you might be already working with?
Well, our very first client, I actually have driven through several of their towns tonight, and that's Southern Worcester County Vocational Technical.
Okay.
They were our first.
Yep.
Doctor.
Yep.
So, we also represent Berlin Boyle Stude.
Okay.
Gateway Digital, a little farther out west. Central Berkshire.
Which was a lot further out west.
A lot further, Mohawk Trail, which is almost ignored. We have the majority of school districts and vocational districts on K-Cod, and multiple collaboratives here in the state.
Great. Thank you.
What is your fee structure?
Our fee structure is based on assets under management, so.
Well, they'll be cheap.
There you go. Because the program is already established, there's no cost for the setup. The legal costs have already been incurred by PARZ years ago, so those aren't put onto you. So, if you look at Slide 15 of the presentation, I think we got earlier, it gives you a basic overview. So, these are basically strict based on assets under management. And actually, it's of good use to Cheryl, because this has been printed. So, the PARZ, 25 basis points, and for anybody who doesn't know, 25 basis points is 25% of 1%.
Yeah.
So, for the first $0 to $10 million that you have, you would pay 25 basis points. Then, the custodian trustee fees is 5 basis points. And those are just based on your assets under management. So, the Vanguard fees, that's based on everything in the pool you select for the New England area. And so, that's $0 to $50 million is 7 basis points. Well, since I met with Cheryl, we've actually cleared that hurdle, and we've now dropped to the next level, which is the 4% for 50 to 150 million. So, it'd be a blended rate. So, our Massachusetts Vanguard clients are now paying for investment management 5.4%. So, as the trust goes up pool, every participant sees a reduction in their asset cost, their investment cost. And those fees do not go up. They just go down.
And that's an annual?
Yes. So, an example is on the following page. It breaks down the program costs, and this, again, is before the drop to 5.4 is on 7%. If you were to have $100,000 in the account, the total all-in monthly fee would be $29.58.
Thanks.
There are no starter costs also. There are no adjustment costs. If you were to change pools, and you want to change from conservative balance or back and forth, there's no cost for that. We also do manage dispersments for clients who are further down the road. There is no cost for that. And then, the all-important question is, if you are not happy with our service, we require a 30-day notice. The 30 days is because when you join our program, you're in an irrevocable trust. And so, we need to guarantee that you're putting your funds into another irrevocable trust. No doubt, we feel that that takes about 30 days.
Dick?
Yeah. What's the money for? Where does it come from? How much is there now? Could you please talk about that?
The money that we're managing currently?
Sure.
So, in our pay trust, or?
No, no. For Quavon.
We haven't established a trust yet.
Well, I understand that, but it's still.
Well, it'll come from our operational budget on an annual basis, hopefully, where we would.
We don't spend anything on this now.
We do not. We had $10,000 earmarked in our previous budget, in this budget, in FY '19, which obviously we don't have a trust yet to put it into, which we will.
We have money in FY '18's budget.
Yeah.
Who said '19?
I'm sorry.
A dollar in there, I think.
Yeah. There's a little more than that.
We have a dollar on my desk with your name on it, and we have $10,000 in the budget to.
That's the best I could do.
I know. And so, establishing it with $10,001.
What, why? What does this do for us? I mean, I know there's some legislation somewhere that says, okay, this is some other expense that we ought, should, must, whatever.
Well, technically, because of the fact that you have a retired teacher's health insurance benefit that we adopted Chapter 32B gazillions of years ago.
Section 20.
Yeah. And so, as a result, there's a liability that the district has, that we don't have anything other than our current budgeting to say, oh, retired teachers' health insurance is $200,000 this year. We're supposed to garner sufficient revenues where we will have available in our OPEB trust enough money should every teacher simultaneously retire at the same time and seek benefits, which doesn't seem like it's going to happen, which it probably won't, but for whatever reason, that is the federal legislation, probably urged on by the fact places like Chicago and et cetera, et cetera, and you can name, I'm sure, more cities than I can. They didn't have anything set aside. They couldn't pay these legacy benefits, and obviously, they went into receivership in Detroit, and things worse. So, our obligation under this statute, this federal statute, is to have an OPEB trust and to put monies into it. Now, the thing about an OPEB trust, you cannot, it's irrevocable. You cannot use it for, you know, if you wanted to pay me extra salary just because you thought I was great. You can't do that. What you can do with it, in addition to paying retired teachers' health insurance, you put it in this trust. But say your budget was really in bad shape, you could take from the trust to pay for retired teachers' health insurance currently. I wouldn't recommend you do that, but if you really got desperate, you could do that. But otherwise, that's what it's there for. It's the only thing it's there for. It's a requirement by law. Our auditor continues to put in our management letter saying, you need to have more money in OPEB. You need to, you know, get the trust and establish it and move on. So, I would say, you know, I forget, Cheryl, what are we supposed to have in our OPEB?
I'd have to.
It's millions.
It's millions.
It's millions. I don't know how many school districts, how many people that, or districts that you manage, or towns, cities and towns, how many people actually have everything they're supposed to have in their OPEB trust? Okay. That makes me feel better. So, we begin our work toward that. It would be great, and I'm almost impossible, if we could start putting, you know, $50,000, $100,000 a year in the OPEB trust. That's a real heavy lift for us, understanding that, you know, our budgets. Well, I mean, we've got to do something, so we need to.
I did a start.
Huh?
I did a start.
You did a start, the $1. But I mean, we have to make a legitimate effort.
So, a couple of things to add on to. So, on your July 2014, your estimated liability was $12.5 million.
Is that all?
Yeah. That was three years ago. So, under GASB 75, you had 45, which I refer to as the carrot. I said, start having a trust. These liabilities are a footnote on your financials. GASB 75 went into effect last June, and which means these liabilities are no longer a footnote. They're on your financials.
Right.
And your auditor can talk to you about this. You're currently, we're given a discount rate of 4%. Now, that's what you use to borrow money in bond. Now, with GASB 75, that discount rate is going to be tied to the municipal bond rating. So, pay-as-you-go, that discount rate is now, today was 2.7. Why does that matter? With every shift we estimate of your discount rate, in either way, your liability changes between 12% and 15%. So, if your discount rate goes down 1.5%, we're seeing your liability on paper go up 20%. If your discount rate goes up, your liability goes down. So, and yes, that's on a paper estimate, but the only way for your discount rate to go up is to start pre-funding. And the pre-funding and the discount rate, how that's impacted, it's not just the amount of money you have in a trust, it's that you've established a trust, that you've got a statement, like, we each year are going to place some funds in our district budget to address this. That you have a GASB compliant trust, which means the funds are irrevocable. They're also dedicated to retired healthcare, and they're very importantly protected from creditors. So, these are all, not just the, will we ever get to this big number? And we have clients, Deitner-Hobbit School District down on the Cape. They establish a trust, put in about $100,000. They went up to bond on their school district building. They received a better bond rating and a lower borrowing cost five weeks after establishing a trust, because two movies, they have shown that they were addressing and acknowledging the liability. So, the pay-as-you-go basically says, we're not addressing it, we're not acknowledging it. So, to do something, I mean, just even adopting a trust and putting no money into it the first year, acknowledges that you see this liability and that you're addressing, and that's really truly important.
Yes, Dick?
How does this relate to insurance? It seems to me, isn't this the kind of thing you pay some sort of a small amount to to get an insurance of a big amount?
I don't think I understand the question. I mean.
You've got health insurance, so you pay X amount in, and that covers you for however many thousands of dollars, or that kind of thing. That's what we're talking about, isn't it?
No.
No.
No. I don't know, I don't understand the question, so it's hard for me to answer.
I might take a swing at it.
Okay.
So, this money is put in a trust, and the idea is the earnings, the investment earnings in that trust.
Stay in the trust.
Will help offset any increases that you can't cover through normal budgeting on your annual premiums. So, if you look at the graphs, healthcare can drain, I serve on my finance committee in my town, and we're quoted 13% increase in our healthcare this year. But I can only, without an override, seek a 2.5% increase in my revenue. So, there's the difference, that delta. The idea is that by funding it, you're helping to offset it in years that you aren't able to fully budget to cover those increases. So, it's to help cover the premiums, not the actual payouts through the health insurance.
Anybody else? Mark, you can, you know this a little bit more, but our auditor has, on a yearly basis, spoken towards this, and this year, in fact, last year and this year, I think he was more urgent in his comments that we really need to move on this.
So, I'm absolutely blessed to be in the committee as well. Aside from what you said earlier about several years being on our liability sheet, we do have to deal with this issue. We do have to establish the trust, and $10,000 we agreed to. And even though our previous audit echoed again the importance of that, that is why I thought it was awfully a nice idea when Cheryl said that we could have some, from PARZ. PARZ, matter of fact, I think you were in the meeting, I was in the fall. I work in Worcester, and Worcester was looking at PARZ too, and we had a presentation with, I believe, you and a colleague.
Yes.
We are, we're all looking at it regardless of our regional district, a city, or a town. We all have this liability we need to deal with. So, without saying any more than that, I think it's, I would say it was.
I'm gonna go get to the inform, is what we're all doing here. And I know as Dick's perspective on this is, I understand that, you know, Dick did say he'll put a dollar in, so this is the year. This is the year that we struck to do the $10,000, FY '18. And also, we made sure that we would develop the trust to help that. And there is a process that Cheryl and superintendent has locked this through.
So, a little later, a little later in the meeting, we'll be seeking a vote to create the irrevocable trust. The language, I believe, has been provided by you with our fill-in-the-blank of the Quavon Regional School District name, et cetera, and the effective date. And Cheryl, I think the vote that's in your packet is not the one that she's going to use tonight, so she's just making some copies, and then we will be able to do that. And I thank you so much for being here and answering our questions.
Yeah, I just have one other question.
Sure.
And I don't know if this is part of your daily work, but this number, our OPEB liability going forward, is going to be on our report from the auditor every year. Is that right? So, that's gonna impact the perceived bottom line.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes. That's why it's, you know, the steps you're taking over the next few years by establishing a trust and discussing, I mean, these minutes that you're having in meetings where you're talking about, it is our intent to each year in our budget, establish, you know, fund online items. Those are all very important things. And it's amazing, the small things that actually make a significant difference.
Anybody else?
Maureen, what's the total liability?
Well, she said in 2014, it was approximately 12 million.
12.5.
Yeah, 12.5 million. It's probably a little more than that right now. 17 million sort of rings a bell to me, but I don't know why that is. And so, it's larger than life from our perspectives, for sure. It's, you know, about half of our operating budget. And obviously, we're not going to be able to create a trust that meets, you know, full, shall we say, full requirements of OPEB, but we're going to be on our way. And that's the obligation. And obviously, as we get more money in, should the market do better than it did today, we should be able to garner some investment income, depending on what you'd like to, you know, just, you know, how, if you want to do a growth plan, or be a little more conservative and so forth. So, that will be up to the committee to make those decisions. Everything looks the same on this, so I'd ask you just to be cautious when you take this. Make sure you have the correct vote in front of you.
The only difference is that the dates have been added in, and the school committee, only the chairman will be signing this one here. It looks like a lot of people are signing it, so that's the only difference. Names are in, the dates are in, and there's one line to be signed.
We can do this later, or?
One other question.
I'd rather.
Are you able to make a recommendation of which plan would fit us best?
Investment pool?
Of the different investment options?
Actually, that is not something that I would make, because I am not a investments investor. What I would suggest is that when you do decide, if the one, you decide to join this program, we have a dedicated portfolio manager at Vanguard, named William Burns, and he is the person that I put on the phone with you, and will whoever the representative to talk about that. So, that's a process. And I didn't really touch on our Vanguard relationship. So, we do have a dedicated portfolio manager, William Burns. This is his program, and he's available by phone whenever you need him. He and I have been very busy since Friday, talking to people. It's important to know.
You're gonna be busy tomorrow, too.
We'll be busy tomorrow. And just discussing this, you know, this is a 30-year investment program and things like that. This is a fully managed, full-time managed portfolio. We also do annual reviews where we come out and meet with you and review, because you get monthly, quarterly statements, but we want to talk to you about your year in the program. So, if you were to put your first funds in, like, August 12, we'd want to talk to you about August 12 through August 11. And then, three times a year, Bill comes to this area, to Massachusetts, and we hold a couple breakfasts or lunch, and we invite our clients to come in, and talks about what he perceives as the state of the market, how the portfolios are doing, and then afterwards, they'll go 1-on-1 time. And so, he talks to you about how you feel about, how are your portfolios doing, things like that.
And would we be able to change investment options?
Yes. You can change at any time. All of your funds have to go into one pool. You're not able to distribute them again. It takes about 48 hours to change pools. What is required is your plan administrator, is that what we call it, which is your district treasurer, will be required to sign and authorize a change of portfolio. That is submitted to Vanguard, and they make the change.
Now, that authorization, is that something that is tied to committee approval?
It's your choice. It's how you, as a school district. So, under state law, the district treasurer serves as your key person on your OPEB trust.
Right.
And then, how you manage that relationship between your treasurer and what directors, that's internal. The state doesn't manage that and doesn't dictate that. And we see it, we see it all different ways.
What is the annual funds obligation for the district?
There is none. We do not have a minimum startup fee. We don't have a minimum contribution initial. We do not have required annual contributions. We have had clients that had earmarked funds, and then, as we all remember, 2015, everybody's snow and ice budget went right out the window. So, people had to readjust funds and things like that. So, there's no penalty, there's no benchmarks you have to pick.
It's up to what the committee decides to put in a fiscal operating budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maureen, you've been to a lot of the, you know, superintendents' meetings. Are other schools in the area looking at this as well?
Oh, absolutely. I've been to several of your workshops. Several of the workshops for PARZ for probably, at least over the last three years. So, yes, definitely, every school district is required, well, every school district that has a legacy liability like us. For example, if you're the Gardner Public School System, the city of Gardner is responsible, not the school district, but if, because we're our own fiscal agent, as all school, you know, regional schools are, we have that obligation. Now, each of the towns within our school district, if they have some retired benefits, they are obligated. Ocam, you don't have any?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
It are built from the state.
Yeah. So, I would say that probably the town of Barry has an OPEB liability, would be my guess, and so forth. So, we're, as a school district, regional school districts are very much into this. We really understand, well, we think we understand it. And Cheryl and I have had conversations about OPEB for a lot of years. We've gone to a lot of meetings about OPEB, but yes, everybody's into it. Some people have a little more money than we have had and have put more money into it. If we were in Wellesley, perhaps our lives would be very different. Concord Carlisle, as a regional school district, probably has the capacity to put more in their OPEB account than we have, but still, we have that obligation. And so, we begin tonight with the irrevocable trust to set that up. And then, we do have some monies in FY '18 to put in that trust when Cheryl feels that that is an appropriate time to do that.
Good. Anybody else? Okay. So, Cheryl, would you, do we want to vote at this moment?
We do, because I'd like you to know where we're going tomorrow, tonight.
Okay. So, do you want to read the language that you would like in, and then we'll just, or is it?
This is the language, so.
Right. We don't want to read the whole.
No.
Two pages.
Kate, what would be the minimum that we would need to read to accept this? Or we would need to read the whole thing?
Do we make a motion to accept the language as written?
As written? I thought so.
As the requirement as written.
Okay.
Okay. So, I would like a motion to be followed by a vote of the school committee of the Quavon Regional School District for acceptance of MGL Chapter 32B, Section 20, as amended by Chapter 218, Section 15 of the Acts of 2015, and adoption of, excuse me, 2016, thank you, Jess, and adoption of the public agency's post-retirement health care plan and trust as stated in the paper before us.
So, as stated and writ.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend you do a roll call vote.
All right.
I need a second.
We need a second.
Second.
Dr. Allen?
I'm staying.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly? Mr. Kelly's not here. Mr. Sarabia? Mr. Spear?
Mr. Leclair?
Yes.
Mr. Wigler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Jean-François?
Yes.
And Chairman Willlinen?
Yes.
Yep. We just made it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, Cheryl, just as a follow-on to this, we're going to have four choices.
Can I just go say goodbye? I'll be right back.
Go ahead. Okay. All right. So, we can pick up with Cheryl later. All right. So, where are we? Teacher Advisory Council?
Not here, but sensitive areas.
Okay. Good to hear that. Student Advisory Council?
Not here. I'm not sure where she is.
Okay. All righty. Thanks. All right. So, let's hit the subcommittee reports. Admin review?
Nothing.
Audit, nothing. Budget?
Right. In your package, you have the fiscal '19 budget development process, and we were supposed to, we were going to have a meeting tonight prior to the full committee meeting, and Cheryl had a family emergency, and we were unable to schedule the meeting with the appropriate materials that we wanted to present. So, we will schedule within the next couple of weeks. Another meeting that we'll take a look at, Cheryl was going to, I'm going to hit on a couple of points here. Cheryl was going to take a look at perhaps some further reductions to bring the budget more online, something that the towns can actually afford. The fiscal '18 budget was 1.8% over fiscal year '17. This current year was almost 2% over fiscal '17. The preliminary budget for the coming year is at $35,833, which is a 4.4% increase over the fiscal year '18 budget. Using this budget figure, preliminary assessments, when Cheryl worked them out, would be at 13.98% increase for Barry, 12% increase for Hardwick, you know, almost 13% for Hubbardston, roughly 8.5% for the Braintree, and almost 14% for OCAM. Now, it's really understood that, you know, these assessment tools are difficult for the towns. I mean, one of, and I don't think we have the preliminary figures up on the website.
No.
But maybe after the next meeting?
Yeah, perhaps.
We could do that. Because one of the, I guess, the survey with Central Mass Regional Planning Committee that came out, I mean, folks were really concerned about, you know, transparency within the budget. The school committee is not transparent with budget information.
So, we won't make it?
Now, since I've been on this board, I mean, we're pretty transparent. I mean, we're putting it out there. My biggest concern, I was talking to some officials here tonight in Hubbardston, is that, you know, if you want to be involved in this, let's get involved early on. Let's not, you know, drop in in May and, you know, start saying, well, why did you do this? Why did you do that? Whatever. Because that's what we've been seeing in a couple of the past years, and it's very difficult to backtrack after you've made a significant number of reductions and people start second-guessing you along the line. We realize that it's going to be a heavy lift, anybody, because towns have their own concerns, and they have their own expenses, and we asked, we took a look at, you know, an attempt to keep the assessments lower. We took a look at perhaps 750,000 of additional cuts, and using roughly 270,000 from E&amp;D to offset it. This brought assessments down to a more reasonable level, but probably something that, you know, we could reduce even further, perhaps. Cheryl's going to take a look at it. We brought it down to 3.6 for Barry, 2 and 1/4 for Hardwick, 5 for Hubbardston, which is still high, but they weren't at, they weren't.
Target share.
They weren't at target share over the course of the last year, so that was why it was higher, you know, 1/2% from the Braintree, and roughly 6% for OCAM, with overall budget increases a little over 1%. However, this was, you know, this was, you know, this was a very severely cutting million dollars for a budget that is already stretched, you know, pretty thin. Cheryl was going to rework the figures and determine where cuts could be made and what of that million dollars was somewhat realistic. There were requests for 10.4 positions, and in the preliminary budget, and they were roughly reduced to 5.4 positions. Capital plan was updated, and the preliminary budget included projects that affect assessment calculations differently. Projects included a parking lot, middle high school parking lot, driveway and sidewalks, roughly $300,000. A computer lab, computer lab floor, annual floor replacement in Hardwick, Hubbardston, Braintree, and OCAM, $72,000, for a total of capital expenditures of $381,000. I mean, it's important that we keep, particularly, you know, we talked here tonight about blended learning in our policy and subcommittees. You know, our computer resources, our computer labs and such, really need to be, you know, somewhat state-of-the-art, you know, moving forward to be competitive, you know, in this particular environment. We are going to meet again. Some of the budget unknowns and unknowns and unknowns that we talked about were, you know, capital projects, there's a middle and high school floor replacement plan, how we're going to fund that, special education transportation, doing a joint bid with what chooses it. Maybe we can save some monies along that line. Heating and oil was up 12.1%. Retired teachers' health insurance up 15 and 1/2% for FY18. Regional retirement assessment was up 10%. We also, you know, special education, private residential school tuition rate increases of like 25, 27%, but you'll act it to 12.1, which is going to impact us going forward next year. And there was also a possibility that, you know, the Hubbardston Center School could be used, you know, rented out by the town of Hubbardston. Now, I'm not sure that went anywhere.
I would tell you that if it was a kite, it didn't fly. And I would suspect that we will renew the contract with CAPS, because even if it, if we decide to share that space, that we would still have the CAPS collaborative program there, which is a rental for us as well. One thing, as Mark talks about, the budget, and it's very preliminary, and I ask you not to put in the paper, please, over the centerfold, 13% increase in assessments for the town of Barry, okay? Because then I can't drive home. Because obviously, this is a very preliminary look. What we have done, obviously, in any assessment calculations, we have used the governor's numbers. The governor's numbers are very sparse for schools. Any of you who read the newspaper about Boston Public Schools and what they think of the governor's numbers, certainly about what I think of the governor's numbers. We know that the Senate and the House, the House budget will come out not until mid-April if we're lucky to really see. We will have amendments on the floor relative to regional transportation. We've lost $100-plus thousand in regional transportation due to the fact that the governor and others have allowed new charter schools to be considered regional schools, and now are going to share in the same size pie because it was level-funded. Also, knowing that many of the contracts that we have have an escalating clause in there for, you know, five-year contracts. So, we know that we'll work very hard with our legislators and so forth to mitigate any reductions in revenues to the school. The $20 per pupil, which is all about 291 school districts across the Commonwealth, will only get $20 per student. That is woefully inadequate. So, what happens is any increase, whether it be in health insurance, or regional transportation, special education costs, whatever, have to get pushed across the table just to the towns. And the towns are really restricted, 2 and 1/2% increase as well as any new growth. There's a little new growth here and there, but certainly not enough new growth to support what the towns need on the municipal side, and/or what the schools need on our particular side of that ledger. So, I caution us to understand that we will be bringing to you considerable reductions in force in order to demonstrate to you ways in which we can mitigate some of the costs. Our hope is to get more revenues, to utilize potentially a little more revenue from E&amp;D. We will walk through with you our use of school choice, and that, that obviously can help us reduce assessments to the member towns. I think that we're looking at probably, if we're very lucky, a 1% increase in our budget, which will still make assessments to the towns, okay, to struggle, whether it be 2%, 3%, or 4% in the member towns. That is difficult. And there is often a feeling, and I think Mark knows this as chairman of the Budget Subcommittee, that the towns believe we just really don't care about what happens to their municipal side. Believe me, we do care about what happens to the municipal side. Obviously, the strength of the school districts are, you know, are on the backs of the strengths of the communities and their ability to raise inappropriate funds. So, I know, I've talked with some of the, you know, the administrative assistants in the member towns about their work with legislators, trying to talk a little bit about their local aid payments and Chapter 90, and the other things that they need to work their side of the ledger. So, we have, we have a lot of work to do, and the problem is, 50% of our revenues come from the state, and the state won't give us a real budget. The Senate, as the Senate will say often to me, we just take the governor's budget and put it in the trash and start over. And so, okay. And then, basically, the, you know, I should say the House says that, and then the Senate says, we just take the House budget and, you know, start from scratch. So, our hope is that we will begin to make some real progress, working with legislators, working with our member towns to come up with, I guess, an economic proposal that we can all live with. One thing that the school district is working on is working with the Coalition of Rural Schools, looking at a concept called Sparsity Aid, which is available in 30 different states. You know that as we have declining enrollments, and we have 160 square miles of school district, we're a very rural school district, and rural school districts have a lot more, you know, transportation costs. The auditors report, I bring to your attention the auditors report, many of you have been at presentations where the auditor has said, you are strangling regional schools because you don't pay what you have in your own legislation, 100% reimbursement for regional transportation. And then, it, of course, says, subject to appropriation, and the appropriation continues to go down with the governor and others saying, well, charter schools can get that now, and it's, it's okay to, if you've had an increase, too bad, the pie stays the same, we're just going to cut it up in more pieces. So, we're very aware of what's happening at the state level. We work very hard out there to hopefully get some new revenues. But as Mark points out, it's, we got, we got a lot of work to do, and we're very eager. If the towns would like to meet with us, I'm happy to meet at any, you know, not at any time, but at a mutually convenient time. And as I've said before, you have to invite us. We just don't drive around and say, you know, good night, let's think I'll stop in and see Hubbardston tonight. I may not be on the agenda and so forth. So, basically, we are eager to meet if that's of help to them. I know that we have the administrative assistant from Barry. We always have Claire Hendrick from OCAM, who always has some good input, as she's a chair of the Finance Committee. Are you chair?
No, secretary.
You're just the secretary. Well, isn't that appropriate, Claire? Anyway, I'll let that go and move on to, hopeful to set up a meeting probably next week or the week after with my.
Studio enrollment, by the way, is only down 22 over.
Which is a great.
Over the prior year. And school choice is down, I think, 20, which is, which I think is more a function of really just, you know, the declining population. And I don't think it's a lot of folks going to, you know, a few folks are in a whole bunch of different schools, but it's not like everybody just drifting to one school which they feel can offer something better than Quavon. So, I don't really think that's the case at all. I think it's just more of a declining demographics.
Yeah. I mean, our birth rates in our communities have been significantly lower than, say, 10 or 15 years ago, for sure.
Dr. Allen?
Yes. You talked about capital improvements, the parking lot and those sorts of things. Have they included in the numbers that you brought us, are those?
Yes, they are. But they were certainly numbers that we talked about at the preliminary meeting, that, remember I said to Cheryl, take it all out. Take it all out. I would say that if I were looking at the school district over time, the Sarnafell roof that you have on the high school is 19, you know, '97, vintage, is going to have to be replaced within probably the next decade. In addition to that, the parking lot, which is again, you know, it needs, it needs some repair work, but it needs to be replaced, some drainage needs to be fixed, some, we've had some concrete issues where we've had to, you know, just kind of jackhammer stuff down to open doors because they, it's been lifted during the winter. We would recommend probably that you're going to take, we have an engineering study to come in to look at our roofs, especially the big high school one. That's going to be a bond. Barry's bond on its roof and its windows will be paid off, yours and OCAM would be paid off, depending on what we're going to do with the, we have an SOI, which is Statement of Interest. New Braintree has asked us to put in for a grant application for the roof in the New Braintree grade school. So, we'll be asking you to approve, to approve that work a little later. And I would just say to you, you're going to have to bond the roof. You're talking multiple millions of dollars to fix the roof and to fix the parking lots and those sorts of things. So, unfortunately, money is not as cheap to borrow as it used to be, but obviously, we'll be working over, over the next decade to look at, you know, over time, what will that look like? Claire and I have had many long conversations about roofs and parking lots, and I worry about the Hydrick roof. The Hydrick roof as well is an asphalt roof, which has a limited lifespan. So, we'll be getting some engineering information on, you know, what's the timeframe on that? And now, those are, the elementary schools are owned by the town, so they technically own those bonds. The high school, on the other hand, obviously, is a joint, five towns paying for, for the roof venture that would be there. We're waiting to pay off the atrium roof that was, was fixed, and the panel project, which is probably now, Cheryl, how many years do you think we've, that was probably?
I can look it up.
Okay. I'm going to say about 2010, or 2010, 2011, if my memory serves me. So, we, we're like, kind of on top of what we have to do with the major building projects, but there's no way the town can, can replace that parking lot in a year. I mean, gosh, that's not going to happen. We're going to have to bond that with the roof, I think. So, that being said, so, as far as our, our annual budget, we have work to do on our, our side. We've been meeting with principals. We have looked at reductions in force at various levels. I've talked with the high school and the middle school about what would, you know, what does scheduling look like? Where are our kids going? Can we reduce some force there? We may be able to in some of the larger departments. So, we continue to look at that. And, you know, I, we've done this so many times, it's sort of like I could.
But at least we're not starting from a 12% increase.
No.
Four, five, six. So, we'll schedule another meeting within the next couple of weeks.
Right.
Maybe get some dates, and then have the March meeting with the Budget Subcommittee and the School Committee.
Yeah, and we have them.
Back on schedule.
Yeah, and we have the public hearing on March 15th. So, I think that Mark is going to talk about a meeting maybe next week for one of his subcommittees, so we might be able to, you know, piggyback on that meeting he did before or immediately after. I don't know who, you know, we can, we can do that, so people can not have to go up tonight.
We'll let the full committee know when.
Yeah.
2021.
I'm sorry?
Panel and atrium, 2021.
2021? That's when it's paid off? Okay. That's, that's kind of perfect. You know? So, Claire, 2021. We'll get that stuff off the books and start again. Anyway, so, it's been a pleasure to work with Mark Wigler. He's made us all, while it's frustrating for us in a way, because we talk about some other things that we say, we really should do this because it would be really great for kids to have this opportunity, but he's reined us in from the crazy talk. And he said, you know, you got to, you got to start with what is a reasonable expectation. And because what we did was, we probably infuriated town officials at times, talking about what we know, if we could do all that we could do for kids, we should do this, and we should do this. And it's not bad. It's just that it was kind of unrealistic. And as a result, we'd roll out assessments that were double-digit plus, and it really was a very difficult thing, because people thought that we didn't understand the municipal side. side. We did, we ended up, you know, always coming down to a workable number, but during that process, I think it was painful for the towns to think that we were without concern for their needs. So Mark has helped us change the process, and I think it's been much more successful last year, and we hope we can make a successful process out of this. Town meetings are never fun, but hopefully productive in that, you know, we get a budget on the floor that people can approve without, you know, tar and feathering the superintendent as I leave the room. So that's good. I mean, we had good luck in OCAM, OCAM amazingly passed overrides last year, and removed asbestos from our schools, and new flooring and new kitchen equipment, and so we've had some really wonderful cooperation from the communities that we're thankful for.
There goes my speedy meeting.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so-
Wait for the next mark.
I know, it's like, one-two punch. Okay, before I go to you, Mark, let me circle back to Cheryl for a second. So, just my understanding was that, once we get this whole, once we start our process here, the way I understood her explanation is there are four Vanguard pools of mutual funds, I guess, to choose from to place this money in. Do you have a suggestion as to how we're going to choose?
I don't think that you are going to choose.
Who's going to choose?
The policy, the school committee policy that we have gives the authority to invest our funds, the district funds, with the district treasurer. And that's why the law has the district treasurer as the administrator of the trust fund. So I guess we can, if you want to meet with the treasurer, but he's the one that's going to be investing these funds.
Okay, and so will we get, or will our auditor, will you, will we get a report from the treasurer? In other words, you know, I mean, people here invest in however they invest, and some people are very steady, and I'll throw something in and let it go, others jump all over the place. I mean, I'm just wondering how-
Like I said-
How will we know what the approach is?
If you want to meet with the district treasurer before we start this, but then going, we're talking about $10,000, we're not talking about a million dollars.
Initially.
Initially, you can meet with the district treasurer, and you can have that conversation, and then going forward, as you said, that's left up to the committee on how they want to do that, but he's the one that's going to be making the investments by school committee policy. He invests all of our money.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to flesh that out. All righty, Central Office.
Well, the brief, quick point. On the first item of success, as I mentioned the last meeting in January, our work, the administration is working as we continue to push through our strategic plan, is going to be Theo, the first number consultant working with, has had a lot of material, and Maureen the other day was, and Cheryl were working on dates to follow up the strategic piece, so we are on course on that. On the other piece of the superintendent search, our last meeting, we worked, pursuing, kept pushing the representative, as we're working with the Massachusetts Association School Committee, Tracy Nowicki. And since our last meeting, we have posted, the profile was put together, we did post the superintendent's position internally on Monday, January 29th. It closed February 5th, so that perspective is done so far. I spoke with Tracy yesterday, and in regards to the internal candidates that have applied, they are now being screened, fully screened, and will have a conversation and a meeting with the Massachusetts Association School Committee, as we said, they will go through the external validation process. And I asked for a full report out from the, from our representative that we're working with, Tracy Nowicki, for next week. So next Thursday, February 15th, I have Central Office Subcommittee scheduled for 7:00 PM. I've already invited Tracy Nowicki to report out in regards to give me a full, to give us a full from the top to bottom, because our perspective is really done from that. And if we are, and then I'd like to move, talk to Lee, and then we would, as part of the discussions that we talked about, that if we had a viable internal candidates, we would then do a interview. We will set up an interview for probably the first week, the last week in February, and I'm shooting for March 1st for a public interview session for our candidates that are applying to the superintendent. I'll turn it over to Lee, Lee will take that, but at least from this perspective, next week, I'll have a report out at the Subcommittee from Tracy in regards to perspective of the superintendent search. I also asked her to bring some further questions, so we as a committee can further than whatever we want to do as we do the interview for our superintendent search, probably Thursday night, March 1st. I asked her to bring not only questions that the school association, school committee association works with school districts with, but also what was important in our profile. When Tracy came in and reported back in regards to what the community looked like, what the community was focusing on, what the parents were speaking about, what faculty spoke about, what we as a school committee thought was important as we thought of our superintendent for the next superintendent. So from there, we'll be able to discern, and the full committee will be given information to be able to, any kind of questions that they think that we should hit on will be sent to Jessica or to Lee to do that, because Lee would be running the meeting as we do the interview search. So I think we're on course, we did say, we put timelines, I wanted as quickly as possible by March 1st, that if we didn't have any high-quality candidates, we would go up. But I do not believe that's going to be the case, but that's going to be the decision that we're going to make as a whole when we hear from the interview committee on most probably March 1st.
Questions?
Do we know how many internal candidates applied?
Yes, one.
Other questions? Okay, anything else, are you good?
No, I think we're tight on task, wanted that to do, and I'll work through you and through the committee, and I hope to see as many as we, not only at our central office next week, but all, anybody can attend as well, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
I don't think I missed anything, did I, Lee, am I okay?
Yeah, I think so.
I did that?
Yeah.
And the timeline, I don't think, my perspective, the full committee can give it to the chair, I truly believe that we should probably go March 1st for the interview, rather than try to pull up the committee on vacation week and look to see who's around. This is a major decision that we need to do, and I would like, and we, we need everyone to be here to have such a perspective as we decide, do we hire our internal potential candidate that we are vetting, or do we not? So I think it's very important, March 1st is the night that we go through.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. Collective bargaining?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing.
Planting facilities? Nothing?
We have something later on in the agenda regarding the MSBA Statement of Interest.
Okay.
So that's later on under new business.
I could say one thing, Lee.
Sure.
That the OCAM project has been reimbursed, we've been reimbursed from the town of OCAM for the full project.
Nice.
We'll receive that, I think, Monday.
Excellent.
As the British would say, brilliant. Or I think they say it. All righty, so we will now go to policy review and reform. A lot of stuff there.
Yes.
It does have a lot of stuff.
Such an interesting meeting. Start out with a few more additions to the school course. There's two ID programs, sports exercise and health sciences. There's a higher level, and then there's a higher, higher level. And boy, they look, it's requisite biology, and it really is sports-related, there's the endocyst, endo, endo system, peak, friction and drag, skill acquisition analysis, genetics, athletic performance, exercise, immunity as well, that's the basic one. And then the next one, sports exercise and health sciences, experimental science combined, academic, et cetera, et cetera. So these are additions to the program, and then another digital design lab. If you ever wanted to experience what it's like to work in an advertising agency, and I guess they're teaching the kids the words and the pictures and design and so forth to go ahead, and they're available to help school and town groups with that sort of thing. So those three courses, we have recommended, we recommended the committee that we accepted and added to the school calendar, so I'll make that-
Just on the agenda today.
Right, no, I have him.
You have a motion and a second, Mr. Sherman.
I wasn't paying attention. I was speaking with Jess.
Yes, we're, motion to accept these three courses.
Okay. Discussion, comments, seeing none, all in favor, please.
Can I just ask, who is the second?
Mr. Spear.
Spear.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you?
No.
Okay, all in favor, please, appreciate your hands. Opposed? Abstentions? We good?
Okay, next. We have, as a committee, been struggling with batting around, poking our nose into trying to respond to what vocab kind of things can we do? And we have had what looks to us to be an excellent proposal that we have accepted. Sterretts wants to do an internship, and they want us to buy the tools to go precision measurement instrument certification. We do that, then our kids get an internship at $22 an hour at Sterretts. And they've been working with another school, which will be unnamed, and we, I can see why they're so excited about working with us. Bolger, they get to work with, the guy's a nuclear physical engineer, used to be on the submarines, he's going to be teaching the course, which is Chase.
Yeah, Maureen Chase.
Maureen Chase, just excellent teachers. And, I mean, an internship at $22, you get real work from that. And this is a way to begin poking our nose into what seems to be an excellent way of leading the kids to have some knowledge, some experience and capability to get a pretty good job. So we think that this makes great sense, and we have accepted this, and I make a motion that the school, full school committee accept this also as something, it isn't finalized, but we give our imprimatur to go ahead and see if you can make it work.
Doctor?
The motion.
Second.
Question.
Doctor, on that wage salary, if my memory serves me right, it is up to $22, so there's going to be a range, so we cannot say that they're going to go in there at 22. All right?
Okay.
That's during their internship, so.
All righty, so we have the motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Walter?
Yeah, so that means we have to put $25,000 to $30,000 in our budget to fund this class, is that correct?
Yes.
That's what they want. My personal opinion is, we ought to be seeing if we can get Sterretts to put up some, do all.
We're not voting on that aspect of it right now, all right?
Yeah.
We're not voting on the money part.
We are not, no.
Probably we'll make sure that the money gets into the register.
Yeah, I don't see if we vote.
We could take, we could look at, Cheryl and I could look at taking it from school choice revolving account, so that would be something I'd talk with Cheryl at length about and so on, and, you know, let the committee know if, you know, there's other, you know, there's grants for some things that we might be able to look at too, but obviously, what we want to do is have some plenary meetings with Sterretts so that we're all on the same page. We're very excited about the possibilities of bringing vocational opportunity to our students that really can provide them with potentially employment. We believe also that we might be offering, because of the certification that one gets, that we might be able to offer this as an after-hours course for community members because they may well find getting this kind of training and this kind of certification. There's multiple certifications. We're only introducing the very, you know, the basic certification, but there's other levels of certification, and we do have very experienced engineers on our teaching staff, as Dr. Allen pointed out. So I think there's lots of room to grow this program with opportunities not only for our students, but for students who perhaps are, you know, have graduated already and are, you know, saying, "Gee, I didn't know what I wanted to do, I went to the Mount, but maybe that wasn't for me," to bring them back, and to make an opportunity for them to come back and get, you know, to get that certification, because these are jobs in this area as well as across the Commonwealth. There are lots of jobs across the Commonwealth that we have people who are not skilled enough to get in this area as well. So we know the biotechnology area is another one, and we do have opportunities there that will be obvious, I think, for our students. We have that biotechnology program that you, you know, helped us to institute a couple of years ago, and working now with the Mount Wachusett, we hope that we can do some collaboration there. So we move forward with vocational education in baby steps, but hopeful that we are positioning our students for better opportunities and different opportunities.
This seems like a good way to begin poking into this. There probably are many other opportunities, but it's a good start, and it seems to me somebody goes through this, takes a job there, "You know, this engineering is pretty interesting. Maybe I then want to go to WPI or go to the Mount or whatever," but it looks like a way to get into the vocab arena where we don't have to put up $250 million for a plumbing something or other. It just, that's not real, we're not going to do that, but something like this seems to be an unmet need that looks like a very good opportunity for us.
And I think it's a very proactive approach. I mean, at the cafeterias of a year and a half ago, was it that long ago already, two years ago, whatever?
I think it was just last year, because that's what the report was given to us April of '17.
Time drags by sometimes. But at the tables, there were, at the tables I was at, there were almost every table, every time we moved 10 or 15 minutes, there were conversations of, "Gee, why can't Quabham do this, why can't Quabham do plumbing, blah, 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 blah?" And people were, I mean, they were serious about it, and they understood that there were costs involved. I mean, they weren't just rhetorical questions, but it was like, gee, could you really find something to do? And this just seems like a great way for us to really segue into getting our foot in the door, as Dick says, you know, maybe a first step or a baby step, but it really shows, I think, being proactive and looking to look for things where maybe kids don't right away want to go to college. And we really, we need to, I mean, we're all happy when we have a, you know, 90-some-odd percent of kids going to college, but there's a significant number that don't go to college or drop out of college, and, you know, if we're looking for ways to help them, I think this is a good first step. Mark?
I just want to say thank you for the administration to do this, that potential relationship from Sterretts, it's a beginning. We're all charged with college and career ready, that's what we do with our kids as they graduate, that's what our charge is by the state. But also computer sciences, we see what's going on with the technologies, we've seen with Allied Health, we've seen with nanotechnology. Not every pathway, or even working with transportation, railways, other things that we tap into, it's not always going to be with a college education. And through certification programs and things that we can help with young adults, we're doing what's best for kids. And with the relationship with Sterretts, with the company, and dealing with precision measurement instruments is the beginning, as you said. So, thank you.
I think, Claire, did you have a question?
I do, it's just a clarifying question. When these people do the internship at Sterretts, what is the skill that they're learning? Is it tool calibration, is it tooling manufacture, and what is the-
I believe it's tooling manufacture.
Precision measurement instrument certification is what they need to go into this.
But they manufacture, that's Sterretts manufactures-
Manufacturing of the tool.
Of the precision instruments.
So we do that here, which then enables them to get their internship there.
Jason, did you hear?
Because there are jobs that are calibrating-
Exactly.
Precision instruments, I wasn't sure if it was that or the name.
Jason?
Just a question, how did this particular need or place come about as opposed to many of the other vocational kind of things that are out there? How do we focus in on this one?
Well, basically, we have done a lot of legwork trying to say, okay, what could we do from a vocational perspective? What we can't do is we can't be a direct competitor to the vocational schools that the towns are paying for. So in my conversations with the superintendent at Monty Tech, she said, "Well, what you could do is do plumbing, because Hardrick, OCAM, and New Braintree go to Pathfinder, they don't have plumbing." So there are kids who want plumbing. But then when we began to have conversations with, what would it cost to put in a plumbing, you know, laboratory environment for, to teach plumbing, ew, it's very expensive, almost prohibitively so for us. We do not qualify in what they call Chapter 74 funding, which is the Perkins money, Perkins. Now, in Lemonster, they have the comprehensive high school where they have vocab programs and the academic high school together, so they qualify for some of that, we don't. So at any rate, we knew that there were other places where there were these internship opportunities, and I believe this was something that Greg and other- opportunities, and I believe this was something that Greg and others
Sterrett reached out to us.
Yeah. And they knew we were
Because they knew we were here, and they reached out to us.
Yeah. And so, we were very interested in that. We've had some other unions reach out to us, talking about the fact that they're looking for women in construction. Reason being, if you're on a prevailing wage job, a government job, you have to have a diversity, and women are some of that diversity. And so, some of the carpentry union, because they have, you know, it's sort of like their average age person is like, you know, 50s and 60s, and they really need to get young people involved in some of those programs. So, they're willing to do some training, the, the unions are. So, you know, we can, we can look into that, but, but we can't compete with, you know, a vet tech program that Monty Tech just put on. And, and then, and it's worrisome to me, because when I sit at the meetings on the task force, and they keep telling us about, our kids should be in, you know, we should be looking at agriculture, and, you know, this is an agricultural opportunity, well, that's, okay, educating kids for the, you know, for sort of our past and not their future is probably not what we should be doing. So we know that, yeah, there's some farms, but the farms are diversifying into breweries, into Spartan races, into all kinds of other things, and certainly aren't, you know, continuing to have large dairy herds or trying to grow, you know, sweet corn and sell it to us. So, our concern is, how do we position our students to have the most opportunities possible, looking as much as we can legally into the vocational areas? So Sterrett was certainly an opportunity. Working with a, with, for example, hospitals, I understand that hospitals will reach out to, to high schools that aren't vocational and do some allied health programs, so there's some potential there for us. But we are, we are limited, because we cannot compete head to head with the, what the voc schools have. It would be very difficult for us to do that anyway, because as I said, they have all kinds of extra money that we don't have for that. They're not supposed to compete with us head to head, but that kind of happens. They're offering a whole lot of vet placement classes, so go figure. So at any rate, with our digital design opportunities that we have, there, there's lots of good things happening there for sure. And so, you know, we, we just have to go into some different spots, in different places. And I know, we have a good robotics program, and our kids, you know, are, but that's, that's just a stepping stone program. I mean, let's be honest, that's, you know, robotics is stepping stone at high school at best.
I have a motion on the floor.
Yes, and it's seconded too, right? Okay. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed? Abstentions? One. Okay.
All right, we continue looking at blended instruction. And I was thinking about Maureen's comment about Mark's, we was wise counsel, of how we present ourselves to the towns. This is the way to go. By using virtual, online, we can get breadth and we can get depth beyond what we're doing now. And we really need to get into this, to a degree we're already doing. As of 2012, all of our kids by policy have to have an online program of some sort, an online something to graduate. And it's time for the, and so, you'll find in your packet this thing with, still has the wrong date, the beginning of it. But this is the plan of action, a timeline to move ahead on this. And it just means that the teachers aren't before a plethora of kids presenting to them, but they're breaking them into individual, the small, online, small group, virtual, all those sorts of things. And we can get into the future, the way we need to, the way we absolutely must by doing this sort of thing. So this is not an action item, this is more a reporting out sort of thing, letting you know that we're continuing to pursue this vigorously. And that the next step is, the administration's going to put together a committee to study, to look at, to explore, to get into, and report back to us. And we really need to get after this.
Just to kind of put a point?
Sure.
I think it would be honestly nice to be in a full committee, maybe next month or down in the spring, to kind of help to understand what is blended learning?
Yeah, yeah.
What it is, what it isn't, what are some of the perspectives out there? Because I think what you said the other night, that Sheila mentioned, that if we asked four people in this room, we might have had a different idea of what blended learning means.
Sure.
So it really is not just, it really is a combination, but it also is a culture, and it also is a methodology, but it also is highly qualified, not only our delivery of instruction, but how to bring technology into the learning process that helps kids problem solve and make things work, and not just from a, you always need teachers, and the interaction of teachers and learning support staff. But where is the technology and the blendedness of the use of a small handheld, to a laptop, to a surface, to a presentation piece? So it's amazing of what blended learning really entails.
And I, and I think you're right, we, we certainly could sort of redo some of that, you know, some of the little vignettes that we shared with the subcommittee the other night, we could provide for the full committee pretty quickly at another meeting.
Ten minutes would do it? That would be great.
Okay.
Do great.
Yep.
We can do that.
Yep. Now, in Maine, as of about a dozen years ago, all the middle school kids get laptops. And the commissioner of education there, Sue Gettrick, who's a good friend of mine, and I talked to her about how it was and what it meant and what she had to do, and it really is, is a lot, and the governor then was Angus King, who's now their senator. And I, and I talked with him a lot about it. I had a presentation by him to a group I was doing. And, I, I think we could probably get together with some of that, not probably not Angus, but Sue. Okay, last thing, there is a plethora of policies. The, isn't a thing that's earth-shaking, they're all housekeeping. You can't say a single one of them is wrong or you disagree with. But oh my goodness, you had to be told to blow your nose on a Kleenex instead of on your, I don't know, it just, there's a couple of, they kind of chuckle, I chuckle. They had us as municipal employees, and I see we've changed that, we are now municipal officials.
Right.
And they had another one where, if the chairman and the vice chairman are not there and are incapacitated, whatever, the senior member takes over, so I wish you well.
He'd be the senior member.
And all that kind of stuff.
I've already had my eye on that, Dick. Because I see the parentheses that says, "Years served." And I think you're far and away. I'm wondering if this is some sort of coup attempt.
I would be far away. Yes, so, I make a motion that we place on the table, all of those policies, and I think Jess said that
Yeah.
There were a few that weren't listed, so that she has, on the front page of our agenda, added them. So I'm not going to list them all, but these on the front page.
They would, they would be on, on, on the table for a 30-day public comment period, so if any of you in your rereading and, and, you know, contemplating these policies you would like to have, you know, questions answered or add things or whatever, you could bring that to the committee prior to 30, 30 days. In 30 days, they would be taken off the committee by your vote, and taken off the, I'm sorry, off the table by your vote and approved either as-is or with whatever changes.
They will be as-is, they are just public users.
So Mark, Mark motion, we have a second?
Yeah.
My motion is second.
Oh, okay. Any other comments or questions on these? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. Are you done, Dick?
Still, the first one is on the floor.
All right.
No, 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 I need you on that.
Okay, well, so we roll on to the next page. All right, special education.
Peggy, do not say anything mean spirited about me now.
Excuse me?
That I, that I got off your agenda the other night.
Oh, no.
I apologize for that.
No, we just, I mean, we basically, we have enrollments. We talked quite a bit about Stetson, which we always seem to get on that kind of conversation. I think it's come to Kristen's table that she might have to take on more services there with the resident, residential kids. I guess there's 12 residential, and through the state, she's found out that that might have to happen. So, we've kind of asked her to come up with a figure to say, how much are you spending there and how much time are you putting in? So that we kind of know what's going on over there. So Kristen's working on that. We also talked about possibly needing an elementary behavioral classroom, where that would go, I don't know, but I think there's a, you know, a need there. You know, they're seeing some issues with some kids that probably need that kind of service.
And this would be in one of the elementaries, but for the, but for the full district?
Yeah.
Yep.
Right. But, and then we talked, you know, the same thing again, about trying to regionalize some of the transportation. You know, Maureen was there and spoke of that with, you know, talking with Wachusett, whether that can work. Depends if we're all going to the same place, you know? But those are about the two big topics that we talked about. Anything else?
Just, just in addition to that, we, on March 19th, here in the Professional Development Center, we'll be meeting with Senator Angoby and Representative Todd Smola and also Don Berthew, Representative Berthew, to discuss possibilities of collaborating with some sort of service delivery pattern to save money with the Quabbot Regional School District. Mr. Representative Smola is, you know, over in the Palmer area, and obviously the representative who, who spends time worrying about Quabbot. And Mr. Berthew, Representative Berthew, is the gentleman who worries about, I think, hopefully he worries about what's happening to education at Quabbin in, in his area. Obviously Senator Angoby is responsible for both of those school districts. They have sent us information on special education, which I'll be sharing with Kristen. And we're, we're working, continuing to our work with Wachusett as well. We got some information on bids that we've continued to, to work through and see if that's any kind of money-saving venture for us at all. But, anyway, just to let you know that we're not just believing that without some really kind of creative options, that funding schools is going to continue to be extraordinarily difficult.
So, my question, which unfortunately is probably rhetorical, we're not getting any reimbursement for our special ed resources that are going to these children from?
We, we do get, no, we don't, we don't get any reimbursement for anything that we do with special, with special education students in the group home where there's about 27 students, I think. And now we'll have about 12 students that we're, that we're programmatically responsible for, but not fiscally responsible for. But it does mean a lot of our time to figure out what programmatic, you know, what, what programs for kids in the Stetson school should look like. So, it's going to take a lot of our administrative time, but we don't have to pay for the program that we develop. In the group home, if we find that a student who has been placed in the group home is potentially eligible to be educated in the Quabbin district, all costs for that education are borne by the district with no state reimbursement, other than Chapter 70 or any other way. If, on the other hand, it's found that the student who is placed at the Seven Hills group home requires services, for example, in a collaborative, or to be placed out of the Quabbin district because of the fact that we couldn't service his needs, then that is billed back to wherever the child came from. So if he came from Rantham, then Rantham would pay for the out-of-district placement.
And their transportation.
And their transportation. They will not pay for all of the time and effort for our psychologists and our behavior specialists and our attorneys to be at very, sometimes complex IEP meetings. Because the objective always is, if you're from Rantham and you're the people coming in from Rantham, you want that student serviced in the Quabbin Regional School District because it is no longer a cost for you. I have had conversations with the interim commissioner regarding, who, why should we be paying for students that are not, you know, residents? And they said, they are residents. They're sleeping in your school district, Maureen, they're your residents. Anyway, that being said, we get no Chapter 70 for them, even though, because they're not included in our foundation enrollments. So, we're not alone with that. Wachusett has two or three group homes, I believe, in Deveraux. Certainly the Neshoba School District has a, a group home. We're not the only ones fighting this battle, no, we're just not winning. Because the state basically, and these children, young people, absolutely need our help and our services. It's not their fault that this is the way in which that they've been shifted around. It is really unfortunate that what happens is, the bureaucrats, like myself, fight about who's going to pay for what, but it is survival for us economically. And sadly, we hope that we still continue to provide the students, the ones who are at Quabbin and so forth, with the absolute best opportunities we possibly can. It is not their fault that there is no compensation for them. So we continue to work really hard with the students, and they come with some challenges. And so, that being said, we, we continue to work on that.
Dr. Allen?
I think it behooves us to remember that we, this school committee, needs to approve the education program across the street and over at the McDonald Institute, places like that.
Eagle Hill.
Yeah, that's the one. And I think when you're talking to them, it might behoove that, your point of the discussion, that, I can remember when we went there, now that may have been 30 years ago, but I assume we still have that ability.
Well, I don't know
We need to approve, and it seemed to me that can be part of the discussion. If they impinge upon us too assiduously, perhaps our approval might begin to waver or be mitigated by that, just a bit.
Well, I would do this. I, I, I would say that it is very difficult, because they have, you know, programs, programming that is absolutely appropriate for the children and for us to go over and say, well, we will withhold this because you're not helping us get the revenues we need.
Well, I don't think we can say that, but I think we can say, well, it's been a while since we have approved. Now, it seems to us that the more you impinge upon us, the more difficult this approval becomes. Should we come?
I'm not feeling, I'm not really feeling comfortable with that, Dick.
Kristen, do they, do they have to present it to us?
They don't present it to me, I don't know.
Oh, Eagle, Eagle Hill does, and St. Aloysius School does, and, and we used to go over to their educational, I don't know about the group home, if that's a different kind of animal, but
Yeah, there's no education, they don't have any group homes, so I wouldn't see us as a
Okay.
But the residential kids.
There's no question, we, we did in the past have that obligation.
Oh yes, we did.
Yeah.
I've been there.
Yeah.
I've done it.
Yeah.
And they gave us a nice lunch break.
Maureen, obviously something is, is out of kilter. If we're responsible for children who don't come from our five towns, are placed in our five towns, but there's no financial backing for that. I mean, some, some, something's wrong.
We agree.
I mean, not, not just for us, I know, I know, speaking with the Wachusett people, I, I understand others are there. So, so there's a, there's a significant amount, I think, maybe statewide, where this is happening. And somebody's making, somebody's doing well financially on this. I mean, there, there has to be, you know, the yin and yang, so if, if we're, if we're in the negative here, so to speak
Yeah, and we are.
Somebody's going to be in the positive.
Well, we
Well, we do have, can we, I'm just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but
No, go ahead.
We do have students that are Quabbin residents, their families, that live in group homes like at Deveraux in our case, so we have Quabbin students elsewhere. I would just say the ratio is, I mean, we only have a few out, but we do have some, just like
That are costing Wachusett.
Yeah, we have, that they are programmatic for, but they're not, because I keep it, because I want to keep a handle on what's going on with our kids. But the districts that are in Boston, Everett, and Chelsea, and where, you know, these are the kids that are at Stetson, they have no, they're not coming up here, so we take care of them, so.
Claire.
But then, these pupils at the residential program, then nobody gets Chapter 70 for them, right? We don't?
Well, no, I would tell you that if you're from, if this student is a student that's in Shrewsbury, let's just use Shrewsbury.
Yeah.
Shrewsbury has that student on its rolls, and student
And the residential students here.
Yes. And, and student, and, see, these are state placements, DCF has placed those students there, not, not Shrewsbury. But Shrewsbury, if he, they are charged to send the student to a collaborative program, they are getting Chapter 70 for that student. And if necessary, perhaps even circuit breaker, because I, you know, depending on the cost and, and the formula for circuit breaker use, so, and Cheryl, and we probably have some So, and, and we probably have some DCF placements that are at a group home somewhere else that we may have to be paying for if they get placed out. But if they end up going to the school where the group home is, we're getting Chapter 70, but we're not having to service the students, so. We just have very few that are out and we've got, you know, if you, if you have a group home in your district, it, it is a challenge for you.
It's a burden.
It's a burden.
And like, but we're, we have, for the size of our out-of-district school, when the group home came in, our out-of-district students doubled. We are at Deveraux, like, we have 30 beds here.
Yeah.
Deveraux, they have 70 beds in their, in their town, their group home. But they're also a lot larger and they already have that most students out of district too. So it's just, it's a burden, but I mean...
It's not the kids' fault.
We're managing, we're managing. And I think the kids are all getting what they need, which is what's the most important. And I think us fighting with the other districts is, you know, we're trying to...
Well, it's, it's a fight with the state.
Yeah.
Because that's where the real issue is.
But it's also that, that districts that the kids have left, they don't...
Oh, no.
Rather just not pay for it. So sometimes it's a struggle for us and we spend a lot of hours getting, appealing to the state, asking for what they call an LEA assignment, to say who's financially responsible. It's just, it's a lot of time and a lot of...
It's a lot of, it's a lot of legal, legal money as well for us.
And we're doing it, yeah, and we're doing it and, and the kids are getting taken care of, but it's, it's just a burden and I always hate to hang in doubt that I'm lying, that I'm lying and complain about it. And I'm sorry for doing that, but I also want people to know how much...
And, and, and I know that you and your staff are working on, okay, what, what Mark, you know, what, what the hours and what it really costs us, so that will be available to you.
See, I think we use that as an example.
Yes.
At a lot of town meetings and yet we never can quantify the dollar amount. So if we can somehow accomplish some number.
Yeah. And I think we're working on that, so.
It's hard, yeah.
Because the number of hours that, you know, psychologists, you know, our behavior specialists, yourself and others, as well as our, the attorney, when we need our attorney or we need to consult with our attorney to be sure that we're, we're doing the thing that is, you know, mandated legally. So it's complex for us.
All right, thank you.
Well, that was my point. Can we make that less onerous on our district? And I was simply trying to recommend something to inspire them to try to make this less onerous on our district.
See, it's not really, they, they didn't make the rules, they make the rules that they're, they're, they get the students and then they manage the students. It is the state, the Department of Education, who has made these judgments with the Department of, Families and Children. And as, and a result, you know, DCF and, and certainly, this is, this is a state issue. This is not...
Well, maybe they could hire somebody to do some of this.
Well, I think it's our obligation. They, you know, it, it has to be us because we're the LEA.
LEA. Or they could help pay for us to do it.
Well...
Well, and I'll just point out, there is an amendment on the table at DESE for the residential part, that they're going to change that so that we will not be responsible for...
Programmatically.
Programmatic responsibility for the residential kids. That is absolutely on the table and it's, the public comment time is over, so they should be making a judgment on that soon. It won't go into effect until FY '19, but it's still, it's still something.
Fingers crossed.
Maureen, a meeting on the 19th, what, is that for all of us to attend?
Oh, that's certainly open, you know, certainly Mark and Lee, I know we've been the ones meeting with them. We haven't met with anybody from Quabot, actually, so that will just be an opportunity for, for us to meet. Probably in a small group initially, but certainly it'll be a posted meeting, so you're welcome to, to attend, of course. So where that will go, I don't know. What we'll find out new and interesting, I don't know. But, you know, obviously Quabot, Wachusett, everybody around us, we're all suffering with the same financial ills.
All righty, thank you. Where am I now? Oh, Task Force. Dave?
Uh, we, as of the last meeting, we talked about the fact that we changed the name, so maybe just from now on, pretend that we could put...
I just thought the same thing.
It's the Quabon Educational and Municipal Partnership. And as of the last meeting, we had, they had, they had taken all the survey materials, digested them, and since then, they've had focus groups. The, the original survey was given to municipal officials in the five towns. They, they digested that material, the answers to those questions on the survey, and they had focus groups, and I think OCAM was the last one. Have they had it clear over there yet?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday.
Yep.
So they did focus groups in all five towns to talk about the results of those, the, the results of those. What, I attended the one in Barry and physically now it's a two-pronged thing. The, the, the first prong is the school-related issues and the second prong is the municipal-related issues. And, and even though they are related, they kind of, kind of diverged. The, the focus group in Barry that I attended, it started with, with the, the question was, that was put by the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission about transparency in the schools. And it was a three-hour meeting and the first hour was chewed up with school-related issues. And what was odd to me was in Barry, what they were talking about in terms of transparency was they wanted less, that they thought that what Cheryl was giving them was just so overwhelming that, that they couldn't digest it. And my thought was, she's giving them that because when she's, when we've given them less, they haven't trusted the data. There was this mistrust about the data that was underlying some of the things that Cheryl had said a while back, so they would like less. And the other end of it was, and we talked a little bit about it earlier with the STERIT thing, there was a big push about vocational opportunities for the kids. And there was a lot of, a lot of recommendations and they were looking for hands-on things for the kids. And they were talking about using some of the grounds here for large animal agriculture and that sort of thing. And we, when I talked about that, that, and, and being probably prohibitive money-wise, they wanted, they, they, people were talking about giving kids opportunities to learn how to change oils and change oil in cars and domestic arts kinds of things, hands-on kinds of things. And Maureen has pointed out before that that, that's not included in the instructional day in terms of the 900 hours or so that the state requires us to do, so that wouldn't be an opportunity. To go back to the transparency, what was, I think was critical was at the budget meeting the other night, Cheryl started her presentation with a slide presentation about what the DESE requires in terms of transparency from the financial end of the school. And she, so she's following the standards that were set by DESE. And that's, that's what people have to get used to seeing. And at that meeting, that was after the, the focus group that I was at, Claire was here, as always, and the, the town administrator from Barry, Andrew Golis, attended. And there was an opportunity there to watch some committee work, doing their work, processing the information, and I thought that was as transparent as it gets. To go back to the vocational piece, this whole thing with STERIT, I think is a wonderful idea. And it, it's a great way to, to introduce a program into the high school that's not going to break the bank in terms of, you're not going to need a huge capital outlay for a plumbing lab or anything like that. And it's a good way to explore and find out how many kids in the building are interested in participating in, in a, in a program like that. They were talking the other night that it was, they're looking for about 20 kids, 20 students from Quabon. And they were even talking about facilitating the transportation to Athol, if that's, that's what they need to do, so STERIT needs to do. So it was a, a very positive way, a very cautious way to get involved. So I think that, that, my point is, it's going to answer some of the constructive criticisms that we received from the, the, those focus groups in the towns. The, the, the second part of that was the municipal end, the shared services. And I'm not going to bore you with that, but if you go to the, the website, and we ought to put that on maybe the next agenda, it's www.qemp.info. What's there right now is if you go and you look at, there's a couple of tabs, there's about four tabs. If you go to the survey tab, the results of the survey that was given to the municipal officials and is, there's a summary of that in a big box on that page. And what's available now is the survey for the general population. So, and it's, I guess it's, you click on, I haven't clicked on, it said 15 minutes. I'm very interested to see, Cheryl, if they took our, your advice about the open-ended question about transparency.
We'll see.
What's that?
I said, we'll see.
We'll see. So they're looking to get information from the general public. They would like those returned by March 5th. And March 5th, they wanted it returned. Mike, did they get that right?
Yeah.
I think it was...
Then they're going to have public meetings through May, again, to digest those, those results. They're also going to have staff meetings.
I believe so. I think, I think they're set up already.
Staff meetings with the teaching staff. Mark?
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm not really clear that they're doing a very good marketing job on this. Now, yeah, first, first of all, I, I was never aware that there was a, a meeting in Hubbardston, like a, a Notre World Cafe or whatever that was, right? Similar to what was held in OCAM to talk about this, right? The second thing is, you know, I'm in and around town pretty regularly and I haven't seen anything about a survey on there from the general public on this particular website. As a matter of fact, I thought I tried to go to this particular website and I was unable to access it. But the, the bottom line is, I think they need to do a little better job marketing. That, that's just my own personal opinion. Maybe everybody else knows all about it and really up to speed with it and everything else, but just a, a little bit though.
Well, I, I agree with you. I, the, there was two meetings that, that day in Barry and I was debating whether I was going to go to the first one or the second one. And I showed up for the first one and I didn't, someone told me that the second one had been canceled because of weather. So if there were people that were planning on going in the evening.
I don't think they were posted.
They weren't.
And I think...
Oh, let me, let me clarify that. The first set of meetings is for, the first is pretty...
For the municipal.
First one went out. It went out to town...
Officials.
Officials only. They wanted to get feedback from town officials. So the first meeting that we had was for the town officials. So I know in the town of OCAM, all of us that are officials, you know, in some committee in OCAM, got a notification from our town administrative assistant when the meeting was going to be and for us to attend. So it was for, now the town officials, after they had provided their input via survey, to now talk about. And so that happened. And then at that meeting with the officials, they explained to the town officials, now we're going to do a second survey, it's going to be for the entire populace in your town. And there was some discussion at OCAM about, you know, the selectmen said, "We want it on the town billboard, we want on that flashing electronics sign, we want it in our library, we want it in the town hall to get the message out, because now, believe it or not, the selectmen really want information coming back from people." Yeah. So we had a good meeting, right?
We did, yeah.
Yeah, we had a really good meeting. And, and so that's why you haven't seen it publicized. You're going to, you should start to see it publicized soon. I said, I think they said they were going to finalize the audit or, or, I mean, the survey, or they had just finished finalizing the survey. And then they were going to post the survey and they were going to ask the town, you could send it down to the website, or you could have a physical hard copy. And where would it be located? And they were going to ask the towns to publicize it. Then you're going to hear about it. Then, after everybody responds to that survey, then they're going to have another meeting in the town for all the citizens to come and to give their input. So it's like a two-step, yeah.
Claire's right.
Right?
Yes, you're right. Thank you, Claire. Yep.
And for the first time, for the first time, those OCAM selectmen were like, they were getting ideas. They were getting ideas.
I'm glad someone can have an idea.
Yeah, because, you know, and OCAM would be saying, "It's not that we're going to close this, we're going to use it for a different reason. We're going to use it for senior housing. What do you think of that?" And, you know, and in the library social that we had in OCAM, I addressed it that way to some of the senior citizens, and they said it was an answer to their prayers because they know in a couple more years, they can't stand their houses. And I said to them, "Get you to think of this. You're by the library, the police are closed by, the ambulance is closed by." One of them said, "We can walk down to the building with a chronology and stagger back." There you go. And now the selectmen are beginning to think about how they can reuse that school. So, you know, I mean, we had a really good meeting, there was a really good thought. Chris Riley, he was really good. He got down thinking, man.
So there was some really good suggestions around sharing municipal services. And there was, there was more openness than I thought because apparently Barry...
That's the first part.
Is it Barry, OCAM, and Rutland that shares a truck?
No, it's not OCAM.
No.
Like the chipper, the, the chipper truck?
Yeah.
The chipper truck? Rutland, and actually, there's a couple other towns, too.
And, you know, Hardwick and Draytry share a, share a police chief. They talk about, they're, they're sharing a dog officer, they're talking about sharing a veterans, a veterans agent.
And did they say they share a superintendent?
IT was testy because they get really parochial about IT.
I know, and it's so crazy.
Maureen has made an offer that, that a logical IT support office would be something at Quabon because it's already very robust. And in my mind, I visualize, and this is kind of very simple, but I always thought of it as, when I was in the classroom over there, if I put in a ticket, and depending on how important it was, I, you know, I, I was just in line to get some services. And I thought it would be the same thing, maybe there would be a dedicated IT person at the high school that would be, whose priority would be the town. So if there was a ticket that came in from Hardwick about some kind of IT problem, that, that person would service that. But they get, they're, they're so afraid that if, if Maureen has a problem at central office, a minor IT problem, and there's a, a major glitch in Barry at IT, that Maureen's going to get it before they do. And the police don't want any part of it. And I think it has to do with security and confidentiality and, and that sort of thing. So I can understand that, but I, I, they're, they're not very excited about the IT aspect.
Dave, they're worried about the Russians.
The sad thing is, right now Barry doesn't have the IT it needs to even move into its building, so whatever it takes. But my, my concern is, obviously, as, as we look at, you know, you know, providing services to other school districts and our towns are right near us, it makes very little sense to me why we wouldn't be talking with our communities about, you know, shared services of some sort. But I get it. They, because if, if they do, do they believe for one minute if their police and fire went down that I would say, "Well, the kids can't log in in room 113?" No, we would say, "Go." We're, we're part of that community that needs what, you know, their emergency services. And the, the amount of confidentiality and the ability to ensure, you know, the security of, we get that, big time. And obviously, the confidentiality that would, that's, that's available in our district, obviously that confidentiality would be in the community. So I get why they're concerned, it, you know, but as I, for those of you who would like to read my town report, the last line says, "Either there's less parochialism or there's less of us." Because it's, you cannot continue the way we operate with this parochialism because it's, it's killing us. It's just killing us. And it's, it seems so foolish to me, but it is what it is.
So the next meeting is the 14th, I think.
So it's next week.
It's going to be mid-March, mid-March.
Okay. No, we change it to March.
We change it to March, yeah.
Yeah, we went to March.
Yeah, March 14th, but I had it in the eighth.
The 14th, yeah.
Yeah, because we work around the 15th.
All right, March 14th is the next meeting, okay.
And at that time, they will have digested the, the public response.
God, we're already full in March.
Please, please share with your, you know, with your constituents that it's not only online, but it's all, there are actually some extra copies available. I'm not sure where yet, Mark, but they were going to put them out. I know the, the library, the elder center here in Barry is...
And we were going to send it out through our schools.
Oh, yeah, and, and the, the town of OCAM wanted to make sure that for the parents of children that are... that it was in the children's school bag, believe it or not.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
The children's school bags, are they bringing up to their parents?
Was it the survey?
Yeah.
Oh, sure, okay, we can do that.
Done?
We're good.
Thank you. All righty, and technology.
We have a meeting tonight. One of the things we looked at is the upcoming budget for technology, so the budget's down 10%, but a lot of that is cost savings. The department is staggering their service agreements over a number of years, so this year just happens to be one where there aren't any large service agreements coming up. And there's also, due to changes in technology, there's a reduction in hardware and software costs. The district's also been able to reduce maintenance costs, things have become a little bit cheaper, toner, light bulbs, smartphone replacements. Also, the department, the district is engaged in a replacement program, a five-year cycle, so they are continuing to replace one in every five PCs. Some of the projectors are being replaced. We talked a little bit about availability, because one of the issues we've had, we discussed this in the past, but standardized testing is now on computers, or at least as far as the elementary school. So the district is trying to up the number of, the ratio of students to laptops or computers, so we looked at some figures on these. Some work needs to be done in Ruggles Lane, where the numbers will retire in some of the other schools. So there's going to be new laptop cart coming into Ruggles Lane, as well as two each in the middle school and high school. And some of the switches are being upgraded to the new generation. There'll be software upgrades, purchases, we talked a little bit about some of the technology improvements, Makerspace, 3D printing, again, to coincide with some of this learning that students need to do to get a little more technical savvy in designing things. So there's some laser etching equipment, foam cutting that's being purchased. And we've talked in the past about the robotics program, you know, it was launched a couple of years ago, they went to a national competition. So there's been some improvements there, they're buying a new robotic arm for this program, and some of the software will work with that also, new circuits. Then we talked about the parent portal, it's been very successful. The parents, 63% of the high school parents have active accounts and periodically log in. The district's been tracking when they come in, and it's, they've seen that there's been an increase when grades come out, and we're forward to do, so parents are checking in. And actually, 48% of the parents at the high school level log in every week, check on their.
Nice.
Students have to step up their game. It's not like when we were kids, and you could get home before the cuts left came on. So at the middle school, the numbers are even better, 67% of the parents have active accounts, and 56% log in weekly. So I think, we're all in regions gone through it, and I'm sure you guys feel it's been a very successful program, and you can really find things out. Even as far as us as school committee members, I mean, I get calls from people, oh, my kids, they're great, and how do we correct it? It's like, login? Look at it. Tell them to update it, and, you know, even if there's mistakes made, it's a way that parents can find out right away, rather than at the end when the kid's grade is affected, you know, so you can stay on top of that topic. I know from my point of view, that's been very successful. We talked, we get about standardized testing, there's been a number of issues over the course of time. The PARC test was originally going to be implemented, and then the problems with the Pearson, and the district's doing better, who are using Pearson materials, so they're going to MCAS 3.0. So the elementary school are doing those, they have the schedule set up for the elementary school, they have a window over which the district can give the test, so they have those dates set, you know, parents are aware of when that's coming up. At the middle school and high school, it's a little tighter, because there's a little more stakes involved, so those dates are set up. The middle school, again, as we were talking about the issue of going to Washington DC, setting up the test so kids aren't exhausted to follow them, or, you know, have issues with that. So that's set up. At the high school, it's still pay-for-test, MCAS. They will be doing selected students, I guess selected at random.
Yes.
Will be taking the computer version of the MCAS. There's also an issue with, the test is not, you know, directly comparable to the old test. So I know last year, certainly for me, we suddenly got these grades for my daughter, and it was like, what happened? Because the, you know, she would be saying that the tests were lower, the scores are lower, so parents have to understand that, there are some concerns, but with this test now, there'll be comparisons. So now, it will suddenly become an issue of how our school's doing. They can evaluate schools against what they did previously and for the next year. So the new world moving forward, but that means we have to get the kids working on computers, typing, keyboarding. And as we know, we've had a cutback in our media centers, so it's not as easy, it's not a dedicated time to do it, but because we have laptop carts, teachers understand they have to bring those, preserve them early, bring them into class, get the kids typing, get them up to speed, so that keyboard skills don't become an issue to the kid actually expressing his understanding of it on it. So I guess that sort of sums up. We did have a discussion, we were talking about technology, and it was brought up, can the school provide firewalls and have a backup firewall and help the towns? And, you know, Andrew was pointing out that the towns probably aren't that enthusiastic about it. So again, down the road, that might be something that gets looked at again, but I guess that's kind of it. Was there anything else? I know we welcomed our new member as part of our committee, so we're happy to have him, again, with his IT background. So, did I forget anything?
So the, so what you said, so what you said was, next year's fiscal budget for technology is 10% less than this year?
Yes, but that doesn't mean we're getting less and not staying on track.
No, no, I understand that, but still, boy, if we could do that with everybody, that'd be really nice. And I, and I think, you know, maybe with, if our kids get good with the robotic arm, maybe simple surgeries.
Help our attendance.
Hey, always, always think, you gotta think of these things, out of the box, you gotta think out of the box. Any questions, technology wise?
You first, we.
I'm physically pretty good right now. Okay, unfinished business, anything?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
All right, public comment, anyone?
I just want to let everybody know that it was, I heard from Mark Myville, and we have a gentleman on the varsity basketball team that is one point away from a thousand points.
Oh, wonderful. Friday night?
It'll probably be Tuesday night, next week, at St. Peter Mary. Just one more point. Brody Pop.
Brody.
You're not playing tomorrow?
No, the game that would have been scheduled tomorrow night was tonight at Clinton.
Oh.
So there's no game tomorrow night.
Oh, okay.
Why is tomorrow's Tuesday? Because the Clinton basketball team has a number of seventh-day adventists on the team, and they won't play after sunset on Fridays.
Okay.
And the boys are in a Clark tournament, number one seed.
They're seeded number one.
Yep.
Great.
All righty, school committee concerns?
I sat in on this technology subcommittee meeting, and we talked, I talked with Andrew about, oh, we have this new policy about electronic messaging by school committee members. And I know, the way I do it, I don't, I don't do it in compliance with this thing, I don't know about everybody else, but I was hoping that we could get Andrew maybe to either give us a seminar, or maybe give us some written instructions or something on how to get up to date, and at least, for me, I didn't know how to do it. I don't know about everybody else, you guys aren't a dinosaur that I am, but, you know, I don't know how you guys feel about that, if you want to. He seems to be happy to do it, so.
We have some dinosaurs who are trying to help each other, maybe the point is well taken, and we can learn in a training. I think that'll be an awfully good idea for all of us.
Either Jess or Andrew could do that, just so they could use a district email.
I mean, maybe you could just put together a written email to everybody and say, this is what you need to do. But he pointed out some, maybe you want to speak to that, some of the real reasons why we should be staying within this QSRD.org system instead of like what I do with Gmail.
I'm guilty too, and I agree with you on that.
Well, you're archived in Worcester.
Correct.
Because that's where we, yeah, okay.
So would that be, that's something Andrew knew, a problem?
Yes.
We are an elected official, we should be using the proper email.
Dave?
I opened up my Facebook account this morning, and I had two notices for birthdays, one was a former student, and one was a colleague on the school committee here, and when I pointed it out to him tonight, he said he didn't realize he was my friend, and I didn't take it personal, so I offered Dr. Allen a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
He's not having a birthday.
Right on air.
He doesn't like emails, but he's on Facebook, so.
He's always in your heart.
Anybody else? All righty, so now we're on to new business. Before we hit that first bullet, I just want to advise everybody that, last week, I guess, the music department needed a rushed decision on a trip to perform at Keene State College on February 22nd, and I certainly wasn't going to call a meeting, so I gave them approval with the, with Dr. Allen's.
Usual provisos.
Usual provisos, so just be aware of that, that they are approved to go to Keene State College for performance. Okay, now, we have a request for approval, out-of-state leadership event for 12 students on Friday, March 2nd, in Meriden, Connecticut.
This is through that mic, the department, Mr. Myville, has an opportunity for our kids to go see a nationally recognized speaker about leadership, that he's in a couple other places in the Northeast that are charging sort of a nonstop money to see him, and he has an opportunity to have our kids go see this speaker, who spoke at the sportsmanship conference, which was in November, at no cost to the school in terms of admission to that. And it's in Meriden, Connecticut, it's only about an hour and a half away, and they would go by car.
Great.
Okay.
So approved with the usual provisos.
Second.
Second, any questions?
I can't remember off the top of my head.
I'll make the hand up.
It's all what's his name.
No, God.
This is.
Yeah, Mike Smith, and he's a skateboard artist, or a skateboarder, among other things.
And then a Dr. Philip Campbell also, two speakers. Okay, questions, none, all in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed, abstentions? All righty, and the second, new business request for approval for MSBA statement of interest for New Braintree Grade School roof.
The motion, Mr. Chairman, is at each committee member's seat, I believe. It starts with having convened in an open meeting on February 8th, prior to the closing date, the Quavon Regional School District Committee, in accordance with its charter, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is to authorize the superintendent to file a statement of interest with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, in order to access potentially sometime in the future, a grant for the replacement of a roof. Please understand that the chances of producing an SOI and having them immediately fund such a project is slim to none. We filed last year, we were rebuffed with the indication, they did send any engineering group to take a look at the roof, basically said that they were not looking at what we call accelerated repair money for projects where the roof wasn't at least 30 years old. That's not the case in New Braintree. I would be surprised to see us be successful in any funding at this point in time, but it was the request of the New Braintree Selectmen that we put this SOI in. It doesn't mean anything other than that we would be in the queue for some year from now, to potentially receive service for a roof in the, for the New Braintree Grade School. Again, it takes usually four to five years before you even get somebody to say, oh, you know, maybe next year. So please understand that I do not expect that there would be a roof anytime soon, and it would not require New Braintree, for example, if they got a grant or so forth, to accept a grant and so forth. So, anyway, we will be filing the SOI with your approval.
So, is written.
Okay, second, questions, comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, abstentions? Okay, passes. My understanding is the request, there is no request for executive session.
There is no request for executive session, it was a tentative request to see if.
We adjourn.
Okay. I'm all right with that.
We'll celebrate your birthday.